Good evening, everyone. With the time being 6:00 PM on Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, I will call this meeting of the Webster School Committee to order and ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded both video and audio and will be posted on the district website. The first item of business is a reorganization of the school committee. So, as many of you know, every year there are town elections and there are certain members of the committee that are up for reelection each year. This year it happened to be me and Ms. Millet. Congratulations on your reelection, Ms. Millet. So with that being said, it's an opportunity for us to make nominations and vote for the officers of the committee. So we have a chair, a vice chair, and a secretary. We reorganized the designees at our last meeting. So is there any discussion before we start taking the individual roles? Anything you want to add, Mrs. Prangeli?
I think you're all set. I think you've got it.
Okay, great, thanks. Is there any discussion about these roles? Otherwise, I can just request a nomination for each one. No? Okay. So the first role is secretary right now. Ms. Blythe, I believe you are the secretary right now. Is that right?
Yes.
Yes. So I'll entertain a nomination for school committee secretary.
Through the chair.
Mr. Adamopolis.
I'll nominate Ms. Blythe as secretary for the school committee.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Blythe. The next item on the, the next office that we should talk about is a vice chair. Currently, Ms. Naparata is fulfilling that role. I'll entertain any nominations for that role.
Through the chair.
Mr. Adamopolis.
I'll nominate Ms. Naparata as vice chair.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion passes. And the next role is of chair. I've been fulfilling that role, I think, for three or four years now. It's a great opportunity for anyone who wants to chair the committee. And I'll entertain any nominations for that role.
Through the chair.
Mr. Adamopolis.
Nominate Ms. Siddiqui as chairperson of the committee.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 I just want to add that was done with a smile.
You were quick on your nomination, Ms. Adamopolis. All right. Well, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from the May 9th, 2023 meeting. Is there any discussion about those minutes? There are none. I'll entertain a motion to approve them.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yeah.
Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is an update from our student representative. Good evening, Victoria.
Hi, everyone. So first item on the agenda is testing because we had a lot of testing these past couple weeks. First, there was AP testing and that just finished for all subjects in the past two weeks. And then we did senior eye-ready testing last week on Tuesday and Wednesday. And sophomore MCAS was also given last Tuesday and Wednesday. So we had two different tests going on at the same time. And makeups for both of those tests started at the end of last week and are continuing this early this week. And then for some senior activities, prom was held this past Saturday at Pleasant Valley. There were 110 tickets sold and it was a very fun night. And a big thank you goes out to our prom committee of Lauren Collins and Emmy Chippy because they put in a lot of hard work and stuck with it and we had a great night. And senior finals are also going to start this Friday and continue into next week. And all finals will be taken in the cafeteria for anybody that needs to take finals. And the senior trip is going to take place June 2nd, which is next Friday, at High Meadows Resort. And then after this class trip, there's going to be a senior lock-in in the gym. And the field trips have been handed out for, I meant, the permission slips have been handed out for that and everything. So we're just waiting to see how many people actually sign up to go. And there was also a trip to Park Ave taken last week by the creative writing class. We made original children's stories for a project and then we read them to grades one and two. So it was a very fun project and it was great to be able to go read them. And the kids seemed to like it a lot. So it was really fun. And just for a sports update, the tennis tournament is taking place here on Thursday, the 25th. And that will be the semifinals and the finals round. And I also would like to say thank you for just choosing me to be the representative this year. And I had, I really enjoyed it. So thank you.
Thank you, Vicky. You've been, you've been great this year. Lots of updates. Way, a great way of sharing the perspective of the student at Bartlett as well. Really informative and really nice to have you here. You really added a lot to these meetings.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions or comments for Vicky?
No, I just wanted to say thank you also to Vicky. I've only been sitting right aside of you now for a few months, but I've had the pleasure of knowing you all year and seeing you at multiple events. And I have no doubt, no matter what you do, you're going to be successful. And I love the contributions and how you participated in the meetings here. So thank you. And we have a little something for you. Coming in the back door, guys. Interrupted the crew back there. And this is for you. And this is from the committee, from us. And we just wanted to say thank you so much. Thank you for everything.
Thank you, Vicky.
They are. You up for a picture? You want to do a picture? You want to stand over here? Come on, Kelly. I should put the password up there for our internet. Thank you. Congratulations, Vicky. Thank you so much.
Thanks again, Vicky. And then the next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. Good evening, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening. I hope everybody's doing well. It's hard to believe we're already at the end of May. Time is flying by and the end of school will be here before you know it. I have a few updates for you tonight. Under personnel update, we had a resignation, a couple resignations. We had Emily Ray, who was a grade one teacher at Park Ave. It is effective June 30th. And we had Eve Buckalter, a grade seven math teacher. And hers is also effective June 30th. We have a transfer in our cafeteria. We have Santos Ortiz Perez. He was transferred from breakfast in the classroom to a Park Ave assistant cook. And I have no other personnel updates there. Again, Vicky, we're very excited for you and your next chapter. So I just wanted to say thank you one more time and look forward to hearing back from you in a year or two or three and see where you're at. I know you're going to do great things. And other updates, I'm going to keep it short tonight. We had our town meeting. It was held on May 8th here at the Bartlett High Auditorium. It was one of the longer meetings we've had in a little bit. It got off to a little bit of a rocky start. I think at 6:30 with our special town meeting, there was some concern over some old bills and just a little excitement early on. But I am happy to say that we did eventually get into a groove. Our school budget passed, the town budget passed. There were no issues or questions in regards to our budget. The school district also did receive some additional funding for some window repair that we may need down the road. So I'm excited about that. We now can move forward with our hiring positions that have been part of the budget. So those positions, Lori has been extremely busy with postings and advertising and getting things going so we can do interviews and get people on board. As you know, it's very active hiring season. So we're hoping to fill all of our positions. And I just wanted to thank all the community members who showed up to town meeting. We appreciate their participation. It's also going to be, I should have announced there that it would be the, I think, the last town meeting that we would be having in the auditorium because I don't anticipate having anything there in the fall as we're going to begin our renovation. So, and the auditorium will be offline. So we'll be looking for alternates. I know they mentioned the middle school maybe having them there, setting up the gymnasium for meetings. So we'll see where that takes us down the road. But overall, it was a good meeting and long, but good and productive. And I'm happy to say that we are now ready for FY '24. It's going fast. The next item I have is we announced earlier in the year, I don't know if it was at the end of last year or early this year, we had our tier-focused monitoring review. And Kathy and Patty have been working very hard at preparing the self-assessment for that. Happy to say that that was submitted in last week. I don't know if you want to give any updates on that, Patty or Kath? Kath, Patty, Kathy, go ahead. You want to give Kathy?
Hi, good evening. So the tiered focus monitoring self-assessment was due on May 15th and we were able to successfully complete it. It was a lot of information to submit, but I think that we provided a pretty good representation of how we are addressing all of the civil rights and special education regulations within the district. So we are going to wait for the Department of Ed to get back to us. They'll let us know from our self-assessment any missing pieces or information that, you know, they would recommend we provide. Typically, what happens is because we'll have our onsite visit next year, they'll give us an opportunity to do any of the corrective action in the interim. So it's kind of a learning process, which is nice. It's not a, you know, oh, you're not doing this and, you know, we got you kind of thing. It's more of a partnership and they'll provide us with any kind of technical support if we needed, resources and so forth. So I'll be happy to update you when we do get the results of our self-assessment. And then, like I said, next year we'll have the onsite review and we'll welcome the Department of Ed here in, within the district. I'm assuming that they'll be in person, you know, now that COVID has passed us and everything. So do you have any questions about, you know, anything that was provided or any more details that you want? I'm happy to answer it.
Any questions or comments from the committee? Thank you for your input.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to thank all of you because it's a lot of work putting something like that together and going through all the criteria, getting all the documentation. And it's also a good opportunity for us to take a look at our practices and be reflective of what we're doing well, what we need to work on, things that we're doing, but maybe we're not documenting that we're doing. But we are doing them. So it's a really good process for us to dig in and take a look and be reflective of what we can do better. And that's what this, and that, to me, that's, you know, coming from the business side of things, that's what audits are for. It's always to look at the practices you're doing and improve on them and make them better. And this is no different than an audit. That's exactly what they're doing. They just call it something else. So I always think these kinds of practices are good practices. It keeps you fresh in what you do. So I look forward to the feedback and look forward to making any changes necessary and being reflective about their comments. And that's all I have under superintendent's report.
Perfect. Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
So we've had some guests enter. And in the interest of respecting your time, maybe we're going to move our agenda around a little bit. So we're going to move over to new business. And item A under new business is the acceptance of a donation of $5,000 from the Auburn Lodge of Elks to Park Avenue Elementary School.
Hi.
Mrs. Prangeli, did you want to start things out?
Yes. I just wanted to say thank you and welcome. I was very excited to actually be at a superintendent's meeting where they were talking about the Elks and how generous they have been. And then a member from the Elks had reached out to me saying that they've been donating to local school districts and was interested if anybody in Webster, if we were interested in anything. And just by coincidence, about a week prior, Ms. Siddiqui shared with me a book vending machine that they use in some schools and other districts. So I thought it was very, it was very cool and interesting and it would be a great tool to help us promote our PBIS in the elementary school. So I immediately picked up the phone and spoke with our dean and said, what do you think about this? Do you think you or Ms. Puliafico would be interested in this? And he's like, absolutely. So he talked to Amy about it. I wrote a letter to the Elks explaining what we would like to use the donation for. And they were so generous in responding, saying, received. So it's, the donation should cover most, if not all, of the vending machine that we can use. And the kids through their PBIS program at Park Ave, like anything else, earn rewards. And those rewards can be coins, which will then be used to purchase a book through the vending machine that they'll be able to keep. So I'm excited about that and look forward to seeing that. And I just can't thank you enough for your donation. You have been very generous to many school districts across. So we appreciate that. I'd like to thank you.
This is through our bingo, a lot of our bingo. This is actually through our bingo, we raise money. Bingo is one of our largest fundraisers. So through that, we're able to give out to the community. And the Elks is very big on education, helping our veterans and a lot of community outreach. So when people ask, what do you do? We simplify it by saying we raise a lot of money and we give it all away. So we would definitely like to present you with this. This is the check in here for the $5,000.
Thank you so much. This is an actual check.
And then we would just like to get a picture of this. And that PBS program, PBIS program is amazing. I know a lot of, I have my nieces and everything. She's out in Brimfield and they have something similar to that. And it's just the fact that it encourages reading and everything. I just think it's great. So congratulations and thank you so much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your generosity.
Amy?
Do we want to maybe?
Yeah.
I'll be scared you might see me there because I've been taking her.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, I'm all set.
All right, very exciting. So thank you, Mrs. Prangeli, for soliciting that donation. Can't wait to see it being used. Very exciting for the kids. So we're going to go back to our normal order of business here. And the next item on the agenda is the business manager report. So good evening once again, Mrs. Prangeli.
Good evening. Thank you. So we did have a building committee on the agenda. I was not here for the May 16th meeting, which was this past Tuesday, but I heard it was an active meeting. I know on the agenda, I was filled in a little bit after the fact. They're really starting to get into, every meeting typically has your updates of your OPM schedule now. That's a regular practice. So they give us an outline of the project, making sure that we are on task and we are on time. They give us an update of the budget. And then they start going through in more detail now about where they're at, what they're working on and next steps. I know we had multiple meetings today. We're looking at logistical phasing. What does that mean? What's the traffic flow? We're getting into the, we're all fine details. How are the kids going to get into the building with these doors locked off? Where are our main entrance going to be? We're going to look at, the traffic pattern here is going to be a one-way traffic pattern going in. So how does that flow with buses? How are we going to make that? Where are kids going to cross? So those are the, all of the things that we're talking about now. It appears, and we want to get the information out sooner than later to our parents because we're trying, our goal is to start the fall without having to make changes, to have all these practices in place so that parents aren't coming in on day one, doing one thing. And then we're switching it a month and a half later and teaching everybody to do something different. Because even though we're going to start the school year with the modulators out front, so we will be in the modulators, the contractor is not going to actually start until November because we're going out to bid this summer. By the time we get bids in and get the contractor on board, it's going to take some time. But we want to start the school year having all the patterns in place so there is no confusion once we get through the school year. Currently, it seems like, and we don't have all the fine details, but all the traffic is going to be looped through Lake Parkway that way. So even people coming into the middle school will be asked to come around. And it'll come up the front of Bartlett. Bartlett will have a bus drop-off. The loop is going to be drop-off for buses and then blocked off because once the day starts, we're going to have modulators in place. We don't want traffic cutting through while we have kids going in and out. So that loop is going to be shut off. The end of the building is all going to be blocked off at Seawing at that point because the gym and everything is the first phase of the project. So we're not going to have the auditorium. We're not going to have the gymnasium. So we're going to have to live on this side of the building while they work on that side. So that's going to change some of the entry for students at that point, coming in later, where our administration office is going to be. So that's all going to be relocated. But buses will come in, they'll stop at the front of the building, do the loop to drop the kids off and then go right to the middle school. It'll all be one-way traffic to go around. Parents who don't have anybody at the middle school can go left and go right out Poland Street. So all traffic will exit out Poland Street. So it'll be a one-way loop. And that's how that traffic is going to continue throughout the project. And it might stay even once the project is complete. When you go to most school districts now, any kind of new building, it's all a one-way traffic loop. So that way, there's no confusion. There's no having to worry about traffic coming both ways with students and active campuses. So those are the kind of meetings we're having now, looking at all the logistical phases. Where do we need a different access point now? Where are students going to come in? Ms. Blythe, you were at the meeting on last Tuesday. I don't know if you want to give any updates as to what happened at the meeting Tuesday?
Sure. So I can add, you did a really great job of summarizing. I can add that there was a very small subcommittee also created during that time. Myself and Alan Young will be on that, on that subcommittee. And we will be working with the OPM's office and we will be working with an architect. And basically, we will just be pre-qualifying subcontractors and general contractors. So our first meeting is Thursday with a small group. And we will just kind of be reviewing, you know, what are the qualifications that we're, that we want to look for. So I think we're aiming to get that wrapped up within four to six weeks. So, so that's where we are with that. Nothing, nothing really new, though, Ms. Prangeli, that you didn't already share?
Very good. So it's really starting, the project is really starting to heat up now. It's active and this is the time where there's a lot of planning, just in general. Where are we going to move classrooms? How are we going to move classrooms? Where are we going to store things? What are we going to reuse? What's going to be new? What's, you know, what do we need to get rid of? What do we do with the surplus stuff? How do we maximize the space that we're using here? We have classrooms that we've used for storage. We are now going to need them as classrooms because we're losing a section of our building. So we need to prepare that. So it's going to really heat up now and it's going to be very, very busy over the summer because not only are we planning that and our custodians are going to have to do, there's money in the project to hire movers and stuff, but it's still a lot of work for the custodians. But we have a lot of summer program going on in all of our buildings over the summer. So it's difficult to get, pull our custodial staff from other buildings and get that help. So it's exciting and it's overwhelming, but I look forward to it. We have great OPMs. We have great architects who are helping guide us with the planning. And I'm really looking forward to see how the project progresses as we move forward. Are there any questions about the building committee?
Through the chair.
Ms. Millet?
Just a small one.
Sure.
And that is winter sports that would normally be there. Are they going, you going to use one of the other schools?
We're looking at the schools. We're looking at coordinating our schedule at the middle school to see if there's a way we can work some of the games in. We're reaching out to St. Joseph to see if maybe we can use their gymnasium because our gym is going to be offline for the first year and a half. We might be missing two seasons. Initially, the project was supposed to start in the summer, but when we didn't pass the vote the first time, it got delayed because everything got moved back a few months. So now we're a few months back. So where we were talking July and working on it, we're now talking November and working on it. Through November, like a year and for a couple of months. So our timeline has shifted a little bit. So it might impact multiple seasons, not just one. We were, initially, we were thinking it was just going to be one season, but now it may affect two seasons. But like our volleyball can go over at the middle school. Their gym was designed, they have the brackets in the floor. I understand from volleyball, we checked on that. I know the athletic director is reaching out to other schools to see what we can use. They may be a little more away games than there are home games, which will impact our transportation because it's going to cost us more money to transport the kids. But we're going to make it work. We'll have seasons.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for those updates, Mrs. Prangeli and Ms. Blythe. Any other questions or comments about that? I think you have more to go, huh?
Yep, just a little bit. Next item I have is the maintenance update. So everything has been pretty quiet, except for at the middle school. In our IT room over there, we've had a couple of ductless air conditioners units that have both failed, which are no longer under warranty. They're very outdated. So they've reached end of life. So we've received some quotes, not too bad. And they will be replacing the units. I think it was about $6,000, which will just come out of normal maintenance at the high, at the middle school to repair those units. Bartlett has been pretty good and Park Ave, nothing major going on there. Here, last meeting, it is cooler in the room. They did a reset. Things are working. There are a few network sensors that are not working throughout the building, which sometimes kick things off. So those parts are on order and we are waiting for them. And as soon as they come in, they will be replaced. And other than that, I have no other updates.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee from Mrs. Prangeli, either regarding the business manager report or of course a superintendent update? Well, thank you. And the next item on the agenda is the principal report. And joining us this evening is Ryan Collins from Bartlett High School. Good evening, Mr. Collins.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everyone is doing well tonight. We are almost to the end of May, as everyone has said, and that can only mean end of the year activities. But before we jump into that, I want to talk a little bit about our data But before we jump into that, I want to talk a little bit about our data around some new policies that we put in place with our lockout, our tardy policy, and then attendance. In a typical Bartlett year, it was reported before, in the years past, post-COVID, that there were up to 7,000-plus school day tardies to be documented at the end of the year. So 400 students up to possibly 7,000-plus tardies. And we are, this year, at almost close of the year, at almost, almost, not quite there, but only 1,000 tardies. And that's all day, all students, almost 400 students, about 1,000 tardy school-wide in terms of classes. So that's a big, big, big decrease in terms of getting kids into class on time. In addition to that, on average, in previous years, VHS would have reported in our data 68 to roughly 70 students on a high day, where students would come to school or arrive past the start time. Now, a high day for us is anything over 20. So we are seeing steady, steady decrease in terms of getting students to school on time, but not only that, once they're there, to the classroom so the teacher can start instruction on time. So we're really excited about that data. And then lastly, attendance letters is a great way that we can go back and track our data around student attendance overall. And with our 10-to-15-day letters that get sent out on the monthly, we are a decrease of almost 54% in letters, and as in previous years. So that is also another plus in terms of getting kids where they need to be on time so learning can take the forefront. So I wanted to start with that data, first and foremost, before we jump into our activities. So I'll take questions about that data if you have them.
Are there any questions or comments from the committee? Well, hearing none, just want to thank you for instituting a provocative change to the policy at the beginning of the school year that we had a lot of questions about. And, you know, it sounds like it's, the proof is in the pudding, as they say, right?
Yeah, right. Yes, very good. Thank you, I appreciate that. And then we're going to jump into activities. Ms. Victoria did a lot of my activities, Great Minds Think Alike, tonight. So I want to just kind of go over, you know, and emphasize the wonderful things that she told you about with seniors. We do have a lot of end-of-year activities coming that have went really well. First, I want to tell you a little bit about our super team and lift them up. This is an amazing opportunity in the community, and my first experience was, you know, awesome. And, you know, someone can tell you about it, and then you get to witness the students having an opportunity. I think that something that we know now at Bartlett and we want to do more of is complementing or lifting up that change and growth, and then hard work for students. Because sometimes we, we get caught up in the day-to-day and those little things, we forget. And so we forget how important it is to young people, and those students all got to get up and tell their story, and it was an amazing event. Also, this week, we got to experience the end-of-the-year choral and band concert. And so if you haven't got an opportunity to hear them, please, in the fall, make sure that you come and you take part in that. They are a great group. And they even asked our chorus director if he would officially begin a Bartlett alumni choir. So I'm putting that out here publicly tonight. Maybe you can send him some notes and messages and tell him just how excited you are about that, because I know there were many, many people singing those praises. So I'm hoping that that will take off, and maybe even a alumni band as well. So I kind of plugged that as well, as I heard those folks. So those are the kind of events that we have, have had already. And then, of course, Victoria told you about prom. Prom at Pleasant Valley was amazing. Our students at Bartlett really know how to go out into the community and represent themselves, and they look beautiful doing it. So I just want to lift all of them up and, you know, shout out the wonderful work of our senior advisors, Ms. Nassis and Ms. Sandborn. They did an amazing job with the evening, and it was, it was a beautiful event, truly a beautiful event. And then, lastly, the end-of-the-year awards celebration ceremony takes place on the 7th, and that is during the morning hours at Bartlett. And that is to lift up all of our awards, grades nine through 12. So we will have that as an end-of-year activity coming as well. And then the senior end-of-year activities, as Victoria started to tell you, they are chock-full with things like Senior Awards Night on June 6th, the senior barbecue, senior class trip to High Meadows, and then grads on parade at Park Ave and Webster Middle, which is also a very touching event, I'm being told, and I'm excited to be able to go along with them and come and see Ms. Polyofaco and Ms. Peterson's children and staff as our kids make their way through. I know it's going to be a really neat thing. And then lastly, Victoria did tell you that we have had a lot of community partnerships in terms of getting the seniors the very last-minute senior lock-in. It was not something that made the original cut, but we are very excited, and I want to lift up Assistant Principal Nieves as she did take the lead on this and got a group of community members together to be able to help get this event going, and the kids will also have a senior sunrise that morning. And so it's going to be a very exciting next few weeks, a very busy next few weeks, as Victoria probably already knows. Let's see, the creative writing class, I do have that to talk to you about. I'm excited that my colleague is here, and she let us come over. Ms. Sandborn did a great job with the, with the unit of instruction that was around writing children's novels, children's stories, and her kids really took to it in the two creative writing sections that we have. And she came to me about this event. I reached out to Amy and her staff, and they were able to get it to grade levels. And so I'll tell a little bit, as Victoria shared with you, the personal experience around it was amazing. The pictures that I've got to see were awesome, and we are taking it a step further, as she wants to next year even have the kids write and come and maybe do writing workshops with the kids. So it's a great way to promote writing, not only with our older kids, but with our young kiddos at the elementary school. And that connection with Park Ave at the end of this year was really, really great, and I know that it will be a catalyst to create great opportunity for the kids in the fall. So that was something really exciting to share. And then lastly, our summer school VHS signups will begin next week. And we are extending summer school this year in three different formats. The first format will be the typical credit recovery that we're used to seeing every year for students that maybe didn't quite make the grade that they wanted to make. We will offer that beginning July 10th, and that will go till the first weekend, August. And then students will also, for the first time, have a huge opportunity to get ahead or to complete a course that they would have not gotten to complete through the regular school year via the online platforms, Edgenuity and Subject. This is going to give students a platform to earn credits in the summertime on their own time, beginning July 10th, and going all the way through the summer, August 25th. And we are extending that to all students at Bartlett that want to get ahead. This will allow them to maybe double up next year on sciences, or double up on math, or double up on art selectives by getting a course out of the way. We'll also offer the advanced levels of courses through that platform as well, and that'll give students an opportunity. And then our third track will be something new called the Bartlett Bridge, and that's going to gear its attention towards the class of 2027, coming up from Webster Middle. And they will work for two weeks in August, beginning on the 7th and going through the 17th. And those students will get an in-depth look at pre-work around English, math, biology, and our PLTW pathways as an introduction for them to understand what the, the year will look like in terms of those courses. And then it will also help teachers to gauge where students are with any learning gaps that might be identified in that time. And then we will end that bridge program with our big freshman barbecue, and then school will start. So it's, it goes like that, right? But that is all of my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Any questions or comments from the committee?
And we welcome you to the barbecue this summer.
Great, thank you. And you have, you have a guest that you're going to introduce this evening, right?
I am, I am, yes. So I just wanted to publicly thank Victoria. What an amazing year you have had, and an example you are to young people, and your commitment to the overall good is amazing to see, both as an educator and as a father. So I thank you personally for all of your hard work, and I know that you're going to do great things. And as you leave this seat, we are filling it here in Webster. And the young man that I would like to introduce, I'm going to ask him if it's okay just to come right up, pull his chair right up here, so you can be introduced to him. This is Mohammed Aslam, and he is a student at Bartlett. He's currently a junior, a rising senior in the class of 2024, and he will be our new school committee rep. Mohammed.
Hi, my name is Mohammed. I'm a junior in Bartlett High School. I've been here since 2014. I was born in Pakistan. I came here in 2014, and I've been here in all three schools, and it's kind of crazy that I'm in the committee now. But yes, it's really weird, but I'm really excited to start. And I just want to say that Victoria did a really good job on filling in for student representative, and I plan to do the same.
Thank you, Mohammed. It's exciting to have you.
Any tips, Vicky?
Just ask a lot of questions. Cool. You'll get a lot of things to talk about.
Thank you, Mohammed. We're excited you're here.
Thanks, Mohammed. It's, you know, this is a really important role because Vicky, Mohammed, next year, you're sort of the liaison between the students and the committee. And as I said to you before the meeting started, you, you all are the reason that all the rest of us are here. Without, without you and your peers, we're just in a building. So you're the meeting behind our work, so no pressure or anything. I know you're going to do an amazing job. Sure. All right. And then there's no items under old business, so moving on under new business, the next item on the agenda is the transportation bid. Mrs. Prangeli?
Thank you. As you know, we went out to bid for our transportation. We typically go out for a three-year bid, and we are allowed two option years for that. So we had used up our fifth year because we took on the two option years, so this was the end of our contract term. I went out to bid, we received one bid from our transportation vendors, which is pretty typical when you go out. There's not a lot of competition around the state, but still, we follow the procurement laws. We did send out about five requests, so there were requests for transportation. But I am happy to say that AA Transportation was our one respondent. We've had AA since I've been here, 23 years, it'll be 24 years, and I think they started with Webster a couple of years before that. So they're a longtime vendor. We have built wonderful relationships over the years. As you can see in your packet, the five-year total of a bid would be $5,696,610. That is just regular education, transportation, that does not include special ed. Special ed, we typically will do separate, negotiate that separate, as we don't have to follow the bid procurement laws for special education, transportation. I am pleased with the results of the bid. As you can see, I put a little memo in there, the first bid came in at under 5%. All of my colleagues around the state have been responding, and they are in double-digit increases this year. So we did pull a favorable bid. As you can see, it goes up gradually over the years from 4.6 up to 6.2 in the fifth year, but I think overall, this was a good bid. So I am making a recommendation to accept this, and hopefully, build, continue that relationship we have with AA Transportation.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. Are there any questions or comments from the committee? I think they, they've been an important partner for us for a long time. As a parent, watching my children get on and off the bus, I'm always pleased with the way that the drivers interact with the kids, and I think it's a really great arrangement that we have, so pleased to see this.
Yes, me too. I think they're a great company. They take a lot of pride in the work they do, the drivers. We've been very fortunate to have a lot of the same drivers every year, so they know the kids, they know the stop, they know the community. I enjoy talking to the drivers every year, talking about, you know, what our hopes are, making sure that they understand the importance of welcoming a student onto the bus and how we interact with our kids. And, you know, I'd like to see as we move further through the years of getting them actively involved with the PBIS. We did that before, before COVID, we had relationships where the bus drivers would come in and they'd get trained on it, so they can reinforce what's happening in the school day, going to school and from school. So now that COVID is behind us, I'd like to get into some of those good habits and to help support our students and families moving forward. And AA is always open to anything they can do to assist the school department. So I appreciate the relationship we have. I think we are very fortunate because not all school districts can say that. So they take a lot of pride in their work, and I'm happy to have them.
Yeah, that's clear. Great. Any other questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve this transportation bid as presented.
So moved.
Tuck. There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Prangeli, for your work on the, getting this to where it is now, too.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the approval of year-end transfers.
Yep. As typical in the past, in your packet, I have a letter requesting to give us permission to allow transfers between multiple accounts. As you know, I have the authority to move between salary and salary, but I do not have authority to move anywhere else in the line item. This helps us close out the fiscal years where any surpluses or deficits, we can move things around and expedite the closing out of the budget. This has been happening for many years, and it really helps us in the business office streamline and get things done in a timely manner without having to create lists and lists and lists of transfers and then waiting to come back to a school committee meeting to have those approved. Happy, once this is completed, if there's any requests, I usually save our end-of-year closeout in one packet, and I'm happy to have any of you review it at any time to see where the transfers happened.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Prangeli.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from the committee about this? Hearing none, I'll entertain, I'll entertain a motion to approve this request.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Laurie, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. The next item on the agenda is the approval of new positions for the 2023 to 2024 school year. Mrs. Prangeli?
Yes, I have a couple of positions that I am looking for approval. The first one is our Bartlett High School music position. As you know, that was eliminated in the budget when we went through the FYE 24 budget process. At the time, the concern was that the student count was low in those classes, which they are. In all honesty, they are lower in those classes. Some of them might have only five or six kids in them, but we have classes coming up at the seventh grade into eighth grade where there are many more students. My hope is that instead of not having band at all for the students who've participated in it, we have a partnership between the middle school and the high school where the band teacher can go over there, work with the seventh and eighth grade, hopefully build more interest, and then have those students come up to the high school in a year or two and then turn this into a full-time high school position. I talked with Ms. Peterson, she is on board with that. They have seventh and eighth grade band in the morning, so we believe that we can work out the schedule and hopefully build our program back up. As you know, during COVID, we had students lose interest in all, in all extracurricular activities, and I am a firm believer in extracurricular, in sports, in music, in arts. I think some of those things are, are the things that make kids want to come to school every day and participate. So I feel that without these programs, kids who are coming up say, oh, I'm interested in music, but they don't have it at the high school. Maybe I'll school choice out and go to another school so I can participate in band. And you take a look at four students, and you add our, our per pupil expenditure, four students losing is one teacher. So it doesn't take a lot of students in a program to, to get your bang for your buck out of that teacher and have them come in and participate. And I just think, on behalf of our students, I think it's important for them to have the ability to participate in these programs, at least to give it an opportunity for another year or two to see if we can generate and increase that participation. And then if, if it's not moving and we're not finding success, then we need to revisit that. But I think we need to give, give ourselves the opportunity to build that program up. I don't know if you want to add anything, Mr. Collins?
No, perfectly stated. I agree 100%. Thank you for your advocacy.
Please, please.
The last proposal that I received for a summer special topic camp at middle school was by the music teacher to run like a middle school band camp, and so to bring that in the summer for creating opportunities outside of academics, outside of the traditional summer school academic support. But the goal there is to create energy and interest so that the program at middle school, seven and eight, gets populated better as well, so that, you know, we're taking steps to populate the, the program from earlier on.
I also forgot to add that this would be SRFunded. So it wouldn't be in the local budget. We do have additional SRFunds that are available, so we are looking to support that through SRFunding for this coming school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Prangeli. Thank you, Mrs. Perangeli.
Thank you.
Just to ask a clarifying question, because I know I've been asked this. Does this mean that we're going to have band at Bartlett next year?
Yes.
Great, okay. That's been a burning question in the community. I've had a lot of parents ask me what the future holds for their, their students, either who are current band students at Bartlett or aspiring to become or coming in from the middle school.
This would restore that.
Excellent. Good.
Through the chair. Will the teacher also be at middle school or no?
The teacher will go between two schools, but will primarily be here at the high school, but will go down to assist with some of the band classes. That's our vision right now, to go down and have those relationships with the seventh and eighth grade. So as they're moving up, they're building that relationship and then they can come up. So they'll be scheduled here also. There'll be band classes here so we can have a band program, but they'll be assistant at the middle school also.
And there's still the middle school teacher?
Yes, yes, yeah. It's about building those relationships and building that interest and that support. And maybe even getting, you know, we talked about, what does this look like? You know, the individual lessons. Maybe that person has a strength and can, you know, do some additional individual lessons to help those kids grow. So when they do come up, they're that much more advanced in programming and stuff. So it's just mostly about building the interest, building the relationship so that they do want to come up and building that pathway. And having that crossover between the two schools, I think will be helpful.
Great. Any other questions or comments?
Through the chair.
Ms. Millitt?
I just want to think, say fabulous. I, I for one was not happy about it getting cut. And to help plan all these things, to help develop it is wonderful.
Thank you.
Thanks to everyone involved.
Yeah, thanks for your creative thinking to make this possible.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? No, okay. Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Bartlett High School music teacher position for the 2023 to 2024 school year.
So moved.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yep. Yes, motion passes. Thank you once again. The next item on the agenda, well, it's the next part of this item on the agenda, is the approval of the, an additional assistant principal position at Park Avenue Elementary School?
Correct, thank you. So this has also been talked about off and on over some time, back even when Ms. Mackay was over at the elementary school. Since we've opened the new building in 2015 with the size of the building, with 770 kids and managing the day-to-day operations to a building which houses the majority of our staff also. Administrator, administration is difficult and it's time-consuming. And with everything else going on with that many kids, we just feel like it's difficult to get into the classroom. It's difficult to get to the fine-tuning of the work that we need to do with the amount of staff and the amount of students over there that we feel we could use additional support. It would be more productive. It would be something where we could really focus, have that additional administrator to focus on curriculum in the classroom, what's happening in the building, and really lift us up to take us to the next level with that additional support. Again, this is going to be ESTR-funded. When I look at staff levels throughout the building, we have increased administrative. We've added deans now at all of our buildings. I support the dean at the high school, I support the dean at the middle school. I think they're needed. We, there's a lot going on at every level and the need is different at every level. But to say at the middle school with 770 kids, a building of that size with all the grade levels, it's really not equitable for the principal to even look at evaluations and just getting through the staff and giving them the adequate attention that they need. So I don't know if you want to add anything, Ms. Pulioffico, about the position?
Just a quick clarification, you're referencing Park Ave. You at one moment said middle school.
Oh.
But just to clarify, that's over 700 students, that's at Park Avenue.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you for catching me on that.
No, no problem.
Thank you.
I know what you meant, but.
Yeah.
774 students, 123 staff. It, it is absolutely a lot. And as Superintendent Perangeli said, to be able to really move to the next level, to have an additional person to share that load with would allow more focus on the staff, more time in classrooms, the ability to give more meaningful feedback and work one-on-one with, with different teachers or teams. The evaluation system is a lot. So to have that many staff members, it's really much of a drive-by, run through the classroom, quick chat. So to have an additional administrative member would just really allow the four of us now to work together to support the kids. The, having pre-K to four is a wide range and a lot of need in behavioral, social, emotional, academic. So again, thank you to Superintendent Perangeli for bringing this forth because I just wouldn't have imagined to ask for it, but I think it's absolutely needed at the building.
And I want to correct, we have 148, I believe, over at Park Ave. Some of those are cafeteria, but when you look at the amount and the enormity of staff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I was counting the people that I'm directly responsible for. Yes, yes.
But it's a busy building.
But there's a lot of people, a lot of people.
There is, it's a busy building and there's a lot going on. And I think that the staff deserve the support from the administration. And, and so I'm recommending to add an assistant principal at Park Ave to be ESTR-funded for the FY '23, '24. We do have the funding there. It is supported, so.
Well, I mean, we've talked a lot about catching kids while they're young and ensuring that they get the support and the instruction that they need to, to eliminate gaps before they're even formed. And for me, this sounds like a very important part of a necessary structure at the elementary school to ensure that there's great work that's being done there for sure, but just to augment that work and really add another layer. So, great, sounds good to me.
Really trying to focus on being proactive rather than reactive and trying to be ahead, you know, and plan and be supportive rather than always catching after the fact.
Yep, great. Any questions or comments from the committee? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Park Avenue Elementary School Assistant Principal position as presented.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yes, motion passes. Thank you once again.
Thank you for your support, thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the review transfer signing of warrants, bills, payroll, and vouchers. We have a transfer request in the amount of $9,841.01 from the Bartlett High School Student Activity Savings Account to the checking account. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Lori, would you please poll the committee?
Yes.
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 Yep.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you.